I'm Councilman Pedro Espinal. Today is February 26 and the time is 5:46. Madam Clerk, roll call please.
Chairman Espinal.
Present.
Vice Chairwoman Peterson.
Present.
Councilwoman Harris.
Present.
Councilman Vargas.
Present.
Councilor Royas.
Present.
You have five present, you have a quorum.
Thank you. I'd like to acknowledge from the Department of Planning, Mr. Bob Azar and team chair that are here, also city solicitor, and of course colleagues, Councilwoman Anthony, Councilman Sanchez, and Councilwoman Endewa. Thank you for being here with us, and thank you to you all for being on our first public hearing for this year. As you know, we have already passed a comprehensive plan, and tonight what we're doing is just aligning the zoning laws in order to correspond with that. So with that, Madam Clerk, item number one, please.
Item number one is an ordinance amendment of chapter 27 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Providence entitled "The City of Providence Zoning Ordinance, approved November 24, 2014 as amended, to change certain text in Articles 2, 3, 4, 5, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, 19, and 20, and to amend the base and overlay zoning maps."
Thank you. And we have an exhibit, so I'll entertain a motion to enter into the record Exhibit 1A.
So moved.
Second. Motion is made by Councilor Peterson, second by Councilman Vargas. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstained? The ayes have it, thank you. All right, Mr. Bob Azar, please, from Department of Planning and Development.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair members of the committee. Robert Azar, Deputy Director, Department of Planning and Development. It's good to be back tonight after a few months. As you'll recall, the comprehensive plan was signed by the mayor in November and became law at the local level, and immediately following that, we launched into this first phase of zoning changes. As we've discussed, there will be an additional phase where we'll be tackling some of the other challenging issues that are addressed in the comprehensive plan. But for now, this is a significant ordinance, it does deal with a lot of important zoning Just to give you the highlights, we're adopting a brand-new zoning map, base map and overlay map with significant changes. You'll recall that we are merging the R2 and R3 zones, the C1 and the C2 zones, we're dissolving the Capital Center District and the Commission, we are incorporating new regulations into the R4 zone, we're adopting new regulations around small lots that include lots that had been previously merged, we created new regulations for multifamily, rowhouse, cluster development, and then there are a series of other miscellaneous changes, some including recent changes in state law that require us to adopt certain things at the local level. You should have in your possession a letter from the City Plan Commission that found this amendment to be consistent with the new comprehensive plan and also with the purposes of zoning. And there are three amendments that I would like to just read into the record. They're all map changes, and they all come in at the request of council members. The first one is 213 and 215 Camp Street, that's plat 6, lots 593 and 594, to be rezoned from R3 to R4. This was actually included in the future land use map of the comprehensive plan, but because of some issues with ownership, we didn't include it immediately in the zoning changes, but we're now proposing to include it. And there would be a footnote on the map that says, "Development on these parcels shall be limited to, A, what is permitted in the R3 zone, or B, what is permitted in the R4 zone, as long as there are no more than 16 dwelling units and four stories, with 100% of the units required to be affordable to households earning less than 80% of area median income."
Thank you.
Okay, that's number one. Number two is 125 to 133 Alger Avenue and 99 Dixon Street. That's plat 89, lots 380, 381, 382, 383, and 105, from M1 to MMU 75. That's from the request of Councilman Taylor. And then finally, 41 Central Street and 45 Central Street, plat 30, lots 686 and 73, to be added to the transit overlay district per the request of Councilwoman Harris.
Any question from committee members pertaining to the amendment?
Yes, Ms. Azar, maybe I'm in the wrong ballpark. I was also wondering what would happen with the request of the change on Haywood Street.
Yes, Councilwoman, I am aware of that, and if it's something that you want to do, now would be the time to put it into the record, and the committee needs to vote on all of these changes prior to the close of the public hearing.
Yes.
So you should read it into the record now.
All right. At this point, I would like to read, Mr. Chair.
Go right ahead.
Item number one, this for council, 2 Haywood Street, 6 Haywood Street, 10 Haywood Street, 245 Pearl Street, 239 Pearl Street, plat 30, 23, lots 763, 73, 2, 3, and 766, R3 to C2. Thank you, Ms. Chair.
You're welcome. Any questions on those? So, okay, so here it is, no further question, I'll entertain a motion to amend.
So moved.
Motion is made by Councilor Peterson, second by Councilman Vargas. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. So this petition is amended as requested and as recorded. Thank you, Mr. Azar. City Sergeant, can I get the list of people that have signed up to speak on this matter? Okay, so, good evening everyone, once again. Our first speaker will be Mr. Greg Garrett. Coming up, please.
Councilpeople, thank you for holding this hearing.
Good evening.
My name is Greg Garrett, I live on Sixth Street. I don't really care if you pass this or not, I don't, you know, I think you're going to do it because it, you know, fits what you've got to do in the process. But if you go, I spent much more time on the comprehensive plan, and I know that's been passed, but the weaknesses in the comprehensive plan mean that we are going to be much less prepared for the next 10 years than we could have been. The changes in the world are going to overwhelm us. You know, we, you know, you've proceeded to densify the city, and we need to densify the city, but if we're going to try to get the economy that we need, we need to add, like, housing for 30,000 people in the next few years. I don't think that there's anything that we have in front of us that's going to do that. There may be some things that would be politically unpopular that would take to do that, and I understand why that doesn't happen. But to meet the real needs of this community in the next 10 years, you need something much more radical and powerful than what you've got in front of you. I'm going to say the same thing about what we do on the waterfront. The things that are going on on the waterfront are not going to meet our needs. They are going to continue the pollution, they are not going to transform the economy. And the zoning code following the comprehensive plan, you know, basically acquiesces to the inadequacy of that. And, you know, we all want a city that moves forward, and this will probably help a little, but it doesn't help enough. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Garrett. Catherine Taylor.
Good evening, Chairman Espinal, members of the ordinance committee.
Good evening.
My name is Catherine Taylor, I live on Lloyd Avenue, and I also am the State Director for AARP Rhode Island, and so I'm here actually in that capacity, and you all have a letter from me in strong support of this ordinance, which we feel will really add to the quality of life in our city. It will provide many more types of housing options for people of all ages, especially for older adults who might be house-rich and cash-poor and stuck in big houses that they can't manage anymore, but their choice is either to stay there or to move away out of a community where they have, you know, strong support, family, walkable, you know, just the places that they love. And so, we believe that these zoning changes will make our city more accessible to everyone, it'll make our neighborhoods stronger and more walkable, and I just urge you to pass it. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Christine West.
Okay, good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Christine West. I'm an architect and principal of Kite Architects here in Providence, and also was the chair of the Providence City Plan Commission for 10 years. I'm here to offer my very strong support for passing this ordinance change as written. To, I really appreciate the Department of Planning Development's very hard work on both the comp plan but also these very important zoning changes. As everybody's aware, we don't have full density in this city. In 1940, our population was around 250,000. Today, that is still under 200,000 but growing fast. This plan offers a way to build that gentle density, to get us back to the density that can support the infrastructure, to reduce our housing costs. I think it's very smart, and I think it is the result of a lot of very careful thinking, a lot of conversation certainly. I will also offer, I have multiple clients who have been waiting in the wings for this to pass, who have ideas for small-scale urban infill developments, they're going to fit with the neighborhood, this is absolutely going to be a game changer. I agree, yeah, we could do more, but this is not dramatic, this is not scary, this is reasonable, it's practical, and it's what we need right now. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Grant Dugarian. Mr. Grant, wake up! Well, we'll wait for Mr. Dugarian to wake up, so why don't we invite over Fred Unger?
Thank you, councilors.
Good evening, Fred.
Thank you. So, as a resident of Mount Hope for 19 years, I'm disappointed that the concerns expressed by hundreds of neighbors who showed up to oppose the proposed project at 103 Evergreen Street have largely been ignored in the late stages of the zoning change process. I acknowledge the benefits of updating our zoning regulations to better accommodate growth and development, but I urge the council to ensure that those changes are implemented in a manner that aligns with the character of existing neighborhoods. According to DataUSA, there's 69,100 households in Providence. They indicate the average household is 2.75 residents. 93.2% of households have one or more cars, and 57.5% have two or more cars. They indicate that 87.5% of commuters use cars to commute to their jobs, and only about 5.6% use public transportation. Look at the data. The residents of Providence want and need cars. In places with the kind of weather we have here, people need cars to get to work, to bring home groceries, and for all kinds of errands. If there's no onsite parking, people park in the street, blocking snow plowing and street cleaning. And where will they park during snow-related parking bans? Making it more difficult for people to own cars means it'll be harder to take longer and take longer for them to get to work, or to take better jobs that might be further from their homes. Especially for the next four years, it's naive to imagine that our public transportation system system will get any better. It's almost certainly going to see massive budget cuts from the federal government and provide significantly worse service than it does now. Please restore some sensible minimum parking requirements for every unit built. I have a degree in environmental studies and spent my career building green buildings and clean energy projects. This issue of parking shouldn't be an idealized environmental issue. It's a matter of practical common sense. Regarding this spot zoning proposed on Camp Street, it was surprising to me that some of the same people who opposed changing 103 from R3 to R4 have supported changing currently R2 lot right across the street to R4. And though a different developer is doing the project, many of the same issues will exist, with excess building height, crowding a large oversized building on a small lot, and developing with no parking. I'll request that that amendment be rejected and the property be developed as R3. Thank you.
Thank you. Dylan Conley.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Good evening.
Members of the Ordinance Committee, the Providence City Council in general, staff, I think really I'm here to be thankful. This is not a small amount of work. I know how much has gone into it, how much work has gone into it, starting from the comp plan, the drafting. I know how much work has gone into it just from arguing with me alone, so I can only imagine I'm one of many. And I just want to express my thanks for your efforts on this front, and to the extent that I can ever be a resource for any of you or from the city, I'd be happy to do so. So thank you.
Thank you so much. Councilman Royas.
Yeah, I just wanted to wish Mr. Conley a happy birthday.
Ah, well, happy birthday, sir. Thank you. Mark Pfeifman.
Clinton, very good.
Yes.
I'm here tonight, one, to comment on how hard Mr. Azar and his team and everyone here has worked on this. I do support it with one caveat, which would be, right now, we have the existing structures in the R4 zones are, if you go to build units in there, they have a square footage on the lot, which is 500 square feet. My recommendation is to drop that on the existing building to 200 square feet, and that would allow buildings not to be torn down, keep the existing character of the neighborhood, while dramatically increasing the number of units allowed in these zones, smaller units, more affordable units, and all of which wouldn't be four stories and ISOs. And I think you'd be surprised how many units are in the existing housing stock we actually have that are under the radar or not legal. And I feel like we could drop the area of the lot to 200 square feet, and that would allow those to come out of the shadows, become compliant with current zoning and safety laws, and it could help us improve housing stock dramatically in the housing that we have. That's all I have. Great work, everyone. Have a great night.
Thank you. Mr. Grant Dugarian, coming up. Do we have a microphone that we can bring to Mr. Dugarian? All right, Grant, I'll call somebody else while you get ready. I'll call Mr. Seth Zarian.
Good night.
Good evening.
Thanks for having us have some public comment tonight. Just want to express my appreciation also for the City Council, the Ordinance Committee, and all the hard work that's been done by the Planning Department, by your staff, and by you. This ordinance is a huge step forward for the city. A lot of work's gone into it. There's always stuff that we could quibble over, we might disagree about, but, you know, I think that there's a lot that's good that's going to come out of it, and we're going to keep advancing from it. So thank you very much for this. I'm in full support of it. I should have mentioned, so I'm a principal at Army Management Company. We do real estate development in the city. We do a lot of nice historic rehab and infill development. I also work with an organization called Neighbors Welcome Rhode Island, which is working at the state level to make it easier to build homes all across the state, because we know that there's a major housing crisis, and it affects every community, everyone at every stage of their life. It matters, and we really have to take strong action to move forward with that. And I just wanted to add one thing about the parking. I'm just going to talk about it, but I too have a master's degree in environmental management. And I would just like to point out that this city was built with a notably snowy climate, when people could only get around by foot. And I think we can make it work with fewer cars in our streets. And I think the reality is, as a developer, if you don't make me build parking, I probably will still do some parking, because I know I'm going to need to do some for my market. But sometimes I might build a little less, or sometimes not at all. I'll figure it out. But when the city tells me how much parking I have to do, well, then I can't solve that problem for people in a creative, constructive way. So thank you again very much for your time. I hope this ordinance moves forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
I really, really value your time. I truly appreciate you coming out here and testifying every time we have a hearing. Thank you for being here.
Well, thank you for all the hard work you guys do. As Grant Dugarian, 20th Street in Providence, as you know, I've been paying attention to environmental issues all my adult life, actually before my adult life. I didn't realize I was an environmentalist when I was a kid. Urban renewal came along, wiped out dwelling units after dwelling units after dwelling units, structurally sound, perfectly fine housing. Providence was a city of a quarter of a million people through the first half of the 20th century. 1950, the population was 248,000 and change. We know that after World War II, families were being formed, folks wanted to raise kids and give them, have them have a little elbow room. They started migrating to the suburbs. Urban areas throughout the United States lost population. Providence, between 1950 and 1980, lost 40% of its population. That's huge. Since 1980, we've incrementally increased our population. We don't need to be a city of a quarter of a million again. But zoning is to implement intelligent land use. We have three categories of zoning, residential, commercial, industrial. In the residential, we have ours 1, 2, 3, and 4. In residential, zoning is designed to foster and enhance stable neighborhoods. R2 zones are stable neighborhoods. If it ain't broke, don't fix. We should leave them the way they are. Two, slash and burn, every R2 zone in the city of Providence is not a plan. It's not worthy of the talent that's in our planning department. What would be a plan is we look at where we lost dwelling units, where we lost population severely, what neighborhoods, what census tracts, and look to replenish those neighborhoods, those census tracts. That would be a plan. What City Council Ordinance Committee needs to do, send this back to the Planning Department and tell them to get two sets of numbers, population numbers and dwelling unit, or as the census calls it, household numbers. And I'm not saying for the entire 80 years between 1950 and now, three years, 1950, 1980, 2020. And then we can all sit down and take a look and see where we lost. Because if we lost 40% of our population, we didn't lose it evenly across the board. That means some areas, census tracts, lost 50, 60% of the population. We need to see where we lost it, then we can determine why we lost it, and then we can determine how we can replenish. That would be a plan. So that is my request to the committee and to the council as a whole. Excuse me.
Thank you.
In addition, this now, this, the comp plan has gone to the state, and the state is now going to be in communication back and forth between the state and the city, looking at, reviewing it, making, indicating where the plan needs to be worked on. So passing a zoning ordinance and a whole series of zoning amendments based on the comp plan that is not finalized yet on the state level is premature. So we should just leave it alone, leave all these proposed amendments alone. Number three, the state has, 45 more seconds.
Okay.
The state has issued a document well over 100 pages indicating what they expect to see in a comp plan. And in the residential category, they expect to see different categories of density. How many? Not two, not three, five different categories of density. What does Providence have? Four. What is Providence proposing? Three. This flies in the face of what the state says that comp plans should have. We're going in the wrong direction. Totally unnecessary. This is not a plan. This is slash and burn. Please let the amendments just sit. Tell the Planning Department to do what I suggested. And as a start, I give to the committee 2020 population data by census tract and a map of the city of Providence divided census tract. Five other sets of numbers need to be issued in order to have an intelligent conversation. And I'm a firm believer, the more information we have, the more better decisions we make. The other five sets of data are the populations from 1970, I'm sorry, 1980 and 1950, and the household slash dwelling unit numbers from 1950, 1980, and 2020.
All right, Grant.
And we can sit down and have a conversation and know where we've been, and that will give us a path, a guide to where we need to go.
Thank you. Thanks. Councilman Royas.
Um, Mr. Chair, I just wanted to, to your point earlier, Grant, I am just sincerely always appreciative when you come up and you're civically engaged. You're at every committee hearing, every, you know, city council session, and one day, we're going to put your jersey up in these rafters, and I'm going to invite the Planning Department to join me in hoisting that jersey up in the rafters. Thank you very much, seriously.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
As I said, we have talented folks in the Planning Department, and we need a plan that's worthy of their talent. So thank you all. Take care.
All right, so I have another exhibit that we must enter into the record. So I'll entertain a motion to enter into the record Exhibit 2A, made by Councilor Peterson.
Second.
And second by Councilman Bargat. This is the CPC letter. All in favor, aye. Oppose, the ayes have it. Now it's part of the record. All right, well, thank you. Being that there is no, City Sergeant, has anybody else signed up? No? All right. Thank you. So we have the packet from Mr. Dugarian. This will become Exhibit 3A. I'll entertain a motion to enter into the record Exhibit 3A, made by Councilor Peterson, second by Councilman Bargat. All in favor, aye. Oppose, the ayes have it. And I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Made by Councilor Peterson, second by Councilman Bargat. All in favor, aye. Oppose, the ayes have it. This public hearing is now closed. All right, so having heard from everyone, I just want to be grateful to everyone that participated through this long process, and especially to the Department of Planning and Development and our committee, Councilor Harris, Councilman Roya, Councilman Bargat, and Councilor Peterson, thank you so much for being part of this and putting yourself through all this hearing and all this meeting. At this point, I will entertain a motion to approve Phase 1 of the rezoning as amended.
So moved.
Made by Councilor Peterson, second by Councilman Bargat. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the ayes have it. This comprehensive rezoning is approved. And being that there's no further business on the calendar, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Made by Councilor Peterson, second by Councilman Bargat. All in favor, aye. Oppose, the ayes have it. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you so much.